Thank you. Call a meeting to order, 7:01 PM. Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Mayor Joe Ross. Councilmember Eric Contreras. Councilmember Vincent is out. Councilmember Greg Runnebaum. Mayor Lieutenant William Young. Councilmember Nathan Cramble.
Thank you. This time would you please rise. Mike Skaggs, Dean of Students at Trinity Christian Academy is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Thank you, Mike.
Very good.
That's great. Thank you.
Invitation and the pledge.
Task.
There we go. Let's do it. Father, thank you for this day. We're grateful for it. We recognize that we live in a good city, and we thank you for that. We thank you for its leaders. We thank you, Father, for the time that they put in to making it everything that it can be. And we realize that's not an easy task. We pray that you give them great wisdom, that you give them courage for the days at hand. Father, we thank you for the men and women who keep us safe, protect us, who come to our aid for these first responders. We pray your blessings on them, of protection. We pray, Father, for their families, and we thank you for the sacrifices that they're willing to make on our behalf. While we pray for this evening, we ask that good decisions would be made that will help move our city forward, that will protect it, that will allow it to flourish. We thank you, Father, for the state, for the county, for the country that we live in, and for those who make such important decisions on behalf of each of those entities every single day. Most of all, Father, we thank you that we live in a country where we can come together, where we can pray, and we can do so without fear. We do so tonight in the name of your son, our Savior Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Mike. We'll start in just a second, everyone. Okay, we'll start with public comments. Our first speaker is Mr.
Thank you.
Start with Mr. Kate, Ms. KJ Hannah. State your name and address, please, and we have three minutes.
KJ Hannah Island Meadow Place Estates Willow Park. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and neighbors. President Theodore Roosevelt said, "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing, the next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing." And that's exactly the decision Willow Park City Council seems to have chosen, to do nothing. During the last city council meeting attended by over fifty citizens, over twenty spoke to the council and asked them to explain how the new commercial amusement ordinance was used to sneak in an adult card room into Willow Park. The citizens of Willow Park spoke up. We did something. In the minute you just approved, which you will be approving, is this entry. Councilman Runnebaum requested to revisit the commercial amusement ordinance. The community doings even had a front-page article on our request for information, and directly after the last council meeting, for a few days afterwards, several of the council communicated with several of the citizens, assuring them that this issue would be addressed. But last Thursday, when the community news echoed our request for information about the commercial amusement ordinance and the adult card room, the city replied with nothing. Until the last minute, when the city tersely indicated more information would not be forthcoming because of a potential lawsuit. The card room was a surprise, the lawsuit was a surprise, and the final surprise was that none of this is included on tonight's agenda. The lawsuit is not even on tonight's executive session agenda. Nothing. That's what it looks like. It looks like our elected officials have chosen to do nothing. Okay? Maybe you'll hear this advice from Teddy Roosevelt. He said, "The person responsible for most of your trouble. If you could kick that person in the pants, you wouldn't sit for a month. Keep doing nothing, and every elected official in Willow Park will be standing during the next council meeting."
Thank you. Mr. Kyle Bryson.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Bryson. I have Parker County Ice House there in two-ten Willow Bend Drive. I just want to say, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Willow Park, thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing me my three minutes. I just wanted to give you a synopsis of what our first month has been like here in the city. It has been phenomenal. We have been overwhelmed with support from not only our guests, but the neighboring cities, from City Council, from city officials, from the fire, from the police. We have been overwhelmed with the support that we have gotten, and I just wanted to share that with y'all. Thank you for all that support. We have a couple obstacles that I've seen on social media thrown our way, and we are addressing every single one of those obstacles with great importance, and we are going to strive to be good stewards of this community, for this city, and to make sure that everybody is proud of what we are doing here for this community with you guys. But I just wanted to say thank you. This first month has been an amazing ride, and we want to keep continuing, doing good things for this city, and growing, and making this city very proud of having us here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chad Dodson. State your name and address, please.
Chad Dodson, twelve-four-six San Vas Road. I think council, mayor, here to talk to you now about Parker County Ice House. As late as two, three weeks here they've been open, we've been inundated with the loud music, and it's carrying across the interstate, and I can actually hear it in my home. I mean, I can't have no peace. I can't hear my TV, and I can't sleep. So I believe they're in violation of the maximum permissible sound level, Section eight point zero-three point six-zero-seven, which says regardless of the measurable dust level established above or measured as provided in Section C of the section of the generator of any sound of such nature as to cause a person to occupy or using any property other than the property upon which the sound is being generated to experience physical detectable sounds, vibrations, resonance, which I am where I'm living at. I'm not the only one. At an distance more than a thousand feet from the property line of the property upon which the sound is, or vibration is generated, measured as set out below or continues period more than sixty seconds shall be prima facie evidence of a sound that is unreasonable, disturbing, that clearly interferes with the enjoyment of life, enjoyment of health, or the enjoyment of my property, or that interferes with public peace in violation of the circle. And it's been ongoing, and I mean, it's elapsed. I don't know what we can do. If, maybe we can solve this issue, because it's not a good quality of life. So I guess that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Harold Heisch. State your name and address, please.
Harold Heisch, thirty-nine Crown Road, been a resident here for over thirty years. I'm going to talk about the drainage fee that has been imposed upon a lot of us here that have a septic system, they have no drainage problems. I've never had a drainage problem since I've been here, and I don't understand why I'm being opposed a fee for something that I'm not going to get any service out of. You know, that's representation without representation, right? You're charging me something that I don't have. I've talked to numerous people over the last week, and quite frankly, none of them knew anything about it until I told them, "Look at your utility bill." Now they want to know what this is all about. I mean, there was hardly anything about it beforehand. I know I talked to this lady here, she said there were numerous publications about it. But if you don't get the newspaper, you don't get phone calls from you folks to know what's going on. I just don't understand how you can charge somebody a fee for a service they are not getting. It'd be just like you there, Mr. Mayor, with your insurance company. How would your policyholders feel if you started charging them an extra fee on all their policies and gave them very little notice about it? You don't think they wouldn't be angry about it? I sell insurance. I know I would, my policyholders wouldn't be happy. My suggestion is to just put a moratorium on that fee until more information can be brought out to the people to understand and let them know what the fee is going to be, what the service is going to do, what they're going to provide, and how this is going to improve this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dale Lewis.
My name is Dale Lewis, one-one-three Camila Lodge Circle. I live in Hunters Glen. We are the subdivision that will be south of the annexation that's being discussed tonight. Even though this is a discussion of just whether you're going to annex it into the city, I think there's three things that we need to really consider before we, the city council moves forward with this. One is, right now, the way it is, when we have a storm, we have white limestone chalk coming down with the water going through our streets. So we need to see if drainage is going to be addressed with that, because we don't need to have their drainage coming through because we already have it now when it's vacant land. Secondarily, based on the amount of homes that they're proposing, it would have to be on a minimum of an eighth of an acre for all those homes to fit in there. They would have seven-hundred-and-fifty to eleven-fifty square feet. It either need to be manufactured modulars or homes with no attached garages. So they could conceptually build it and put parking on the outside and then cram all those houses in together, because they stated they're freestanding homes. At that density, they would have to have two entrances. The only other entrance besides the frontage road off I-20 would be to come through our subdivision. I know a lot of our residents don't want to see one-hundred-and-sixty-four residents coming through our subdivision to get to Old Bankhead Highway. And thirdly, when you're looking at the property from Hunters Glen looking north, on the east side is a stand of trees. Right on the other side of that stand of trees is the oil storage facility and a natural gas transfer pipeline. I think it's incumbent upon the city, before they approve anything, they get ironclad language that environmental protection reports are done, because I don't want them digging up land and then all of a sudden saying, "Oh, this stuff is poisoned with..." You know, the facility can say that they're not leaking, but you don't know until you start digging up that ground what might have leached over. And I think those are three things the city should consider, whether you're going to allow it to even be annexed into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Snyder.
Are these comments during the public hearing?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to open the public hearing?
I told them that they can speak during the public hearing when it opens, or they can speak during the comments. Do you choose to speak now, or do you want to speak during the public hearing?
I think probably during the public hearing is better.
The next one is Ms. Marcy Galley.
Good evening, Marcy Galley, Squaw Creek Road in Willow Park. I was a little disappointed that the poker room was not listed on the agenda to provide counsel an opportunity to straighten out the situation in a public meeting. I assume the absence of this topic in closed session means that there is no lawsuit. Using a potential lawsuit to avoid discussing the matter during the meeting is not in the best interest of the public. If counsel is discussing this matter one-on-one with the attorney, you are not upholding the spirit of the Texas Open Meetings Act. There was a similar gambling room request in the city of Fort Worth earlier this year, like March, April, and that poker room was issued a special use permit by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the city council denied the request. The room would have gone into intensive industrial use zoning, and the term amusement was referenced once in the staff memo, but it was still denied by the city council. The other item missing from tonight's agenda would have addressed the new amusement zoning. I would like to urge counsel again to bring this issue back at the next meeting in order to direct staff to begin the process of cleaning up that ordinance in particular. Uses need to be clarified, and any ambiguity that might lead to confusion and misinterpretation in the future should be removed. The phrase, there's a phrase in there that's very ambiguous. City code on maximum permissible sound levels doesn't appear to be adhered to by the Parker County Ice House if residents can hear the music over a mile away. So I would just urge Parker County Ice House to follow the city codes. I do appreciate your comments, so thank you for that. If I still have time left, I wanted to say, one thing that the city did do well this year is the stormwater drainage fee. I know that you even extended public hearings on that issue. I know it's not popular, but I know this city has drainage needs, and the local government code allows a path for cities to get there, and y'all took that path. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll have a public hearing. The city of Willow Park, Texas proposes to institute annexation proceedings to enlarge and extend the boundary of said city to include the following described territory, to wit: being nineteen-point-one-six acres of land situated in the John H. Phelps survey, abstract number ten forty-six, Parker County, Texas, and being a portion of fifty-two-point-two-eight-three acre tract described in deed to D and M, a Texas General Partnership, recorded in volume fourteen-on-three, page seventeen thirteen, real property records, Parker County, Texas. A public hearing will be held by and before the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, on the twelfth day of October, 2021, at seven PM in the City Chamber, City Hall, five sixteen Ranch House Road, city of Willow Park, Texas, for all persons interested in the above, above a proposed annexation. At said time and place, all such persons shall have the right to appear and be heard. Of all said matters and things, all persons and things and matters here and mentioned will take place. We'll open the public hearing at seven-twenty PM. We have a couple speakers, and the first one would be Mr. Ryan Neal. You state your name and address, please.
Ryan Neal, how's your work there?
Yes, sir, please.
Ryan Neal is at one-seventy-two Watertail Drive, which happens to be the very last house in Hunters Glen, which will butt right up to where their proposed annex area is. I understand they're wanting to build one-hundred-and-sixty-four, seven-hundred-and-fifty to eleven-hundred-and-fifty square foot rental homes. It's going to decrease the value of our properties, which are pretty high right now. I feel like, one question I have, if you have answers, I was curious if they're going to extend our street into that neighborhood, the Watertail Drive. Do we know that?
No.
Okay. Pardon me? There's a site plan, but it doesn't show streets. I'm very opposed to this. I think that a lot of people in the neighborhood of ours as well, Willow Park Village as well is going to be backed up right to it. All these houses are going to be built there, and they're rental homes. Therefore, I feel that people that live there aren't going to take as good a care of the properties. I don't think there's going to be garages, so they're going to be parking on the streets. I know that in our neighborhood, they're not really supposed to park on the streets according to HOA, and our bylaws state that there's not supposed to be more than ten percent rental homes. These are all going to be rental homes. I just want to state that I'm very opposed to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. David Snyder.
My name is David Snyder. I'm at seven-oh-one-two Golden Gate Drive. Well, you know me, a long time ago. I am here on behalf, really, of my daughter, my son-in-law, and my granddaughter. When something like this is done, I mean, my questions are, what are the present zoning, and once it's annexed, what will the zoning be following then? You know, what are going to be the minimum lot sizes? Because I don't recall any kind of communities that have been developed with these small homes, at least in this area that I've seen, at all. Have all environmental questions been answered on how, you know, how it'll be treated? One gentleman mentioned, how's the drainage going to be handled? And are they going to have detention? Most developments now have to have onsite detention. And really, those are the main things. That's what my son-in-law and daughter look to for the city, to help protect them, protect their property values. And, you know, vacant land's going to get developed. There's no question, depending on where it is. Is it developed properly? Creating a bunch, more or less detached apartments for all lease-only in that area doesn't seem like the best use for that land. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marcy Galley.
Hello again. Marcy Galley, Squaw Creek Road, Willow Park. So when I was looking up this annexation item, and I do support annexation, by the way, because then they have to conform to our city codes, so, and I know that's what this, the, I know that's the point of this public hearing. So I do support the annexation, but the area includes approximately five acres of land that's already within our city limits, and that's already designated in the I-20 overlay district with commercial zoning. This is according to our own zoning map. So the annexation documents would need to be amended, I assume. Any motion made tonight to approve this annexation would need to reflect only that area that's outside of city limits, because that comes in as R-one, large lot, single I know the zoning change is next in the process, and I just wanted to say, a planned development does not create new zoning. It serves as an overlay to base zoning and provides a development plan for multi-use. As far as I'm aware, Willow Park has no zoning for small, single-family cottage-style residential. If over one-hundred-and-sixty homes are planned for this area, the density per acre aligns with nothing in our current zoning ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? We'll close the public hearing, I'm sorry?
Betty, back there?
Okay. We'll close the public hearing at seven-twenty-five PM. And our next item for discussion is an ordinance annexing the approximately nineteen-one-point-six acres of land into the city limits of Willow Park and approving an annexation services agreement with the property owners of the annex tract. Ms. Betty.
You do have in your packet the petition for annexation, as well as the annexation map. The city's engineer and the surveyor, Jacob and Martin, did identify the nineteen acres as being in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. There's also another ten-acre tract to the northeast that is not inside the city limits and is not proposed for annexation. We have the ordinance, which, following the public hearing, if you choose to adopt it, will be, the property will be annexed, which we will file with the county clerk, and you also have the municipal service agreement, which the owner has executed in the city council. Can I answer any questions?
Yes. So on the issue of whether there is a portion of this that's
So on the issue of whether there is a portion of this that's already in the city limits, is that, you're saying that the engineer has certified that that's not correct?
They, that's the survey that they were given, and that's what they have looked at.
Do you think there's any potential error there by the surveyor?
If the property is already in, and it were included with this, it would still...
How would the zoning work for what's already?
The zoning, any, with this annexation, this 19.61 acre tract, when it comes in, will come in as R1, which is what is required.
So the fact that there's I-20 overlay commercial, you're saying the annexation would override that and the entire thing would become R1?
Well, if there's an overlay, I mean, in other words, if there was a portion that was already in, that would remain as it is. In other words, if it, if we actually didn't say it was 18 acres instead of 19, the zoning with that will be in, but that is, the engineer and the surveyor have looked at it, and that's what they submitted.
You're saying our surveyor verified it?
Our, our engineer.
Engineer verified their surveyor.
Yes. The surveyor from their company did.
Oh, she got, she has it. I hear her copy.
The, is this for?
Yeah.
Yes, the pink.
Okay. Any other questions for Betty?
Well, one thing that I'd like to, could you just address, we did have some public hearing comments about the process regarding it comes in as R1, and then it gets rezoned if it has anything other than R1. Could you address that process?
Right. All property comes into the city as R1 zoning, which is our most restrictive single-family zoning classification. If rezoning was requested, obviously, they go through the rezoning process, through the public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission and council. There was one question regarding stormwater drainage.
Right.
That is a part of the development process, which comes after the zoning. They are required to meet the city's ordinance, drainage ordinance, with regard to their stormwater retention. Depending on the type of development it is, whether it's residential, commercial, there's obviously different criteria. It could require detention. We would have, we would have to evaluate it at that time.
And... So the owner would submit their plan, and our engineer would review?
Our engineer, all of the plan would be reviewed by staff before going to planning and zoning commission. The city's engineer, fire with regard to access to the property, public works, with regard to utilities, and then, of course, the stormwater is also reviewed by our engineer. Street layout, traffic flow, you know, without having the actual development plan in place, you know, it could even require a traffic impact analysis.
Pat, I have a question for you. If this is, if for some reason we determine that the survey that was submitted is not correct for some reason, does the adoption of this annexation become invalid and start over with a...
I think it creates a problem with your zoning. And right then, we'd already have a zoned property. Our annexation ordinance needs to reflect whatever the property is we're annexing.
We will be happy to have them look at it again.
I mean, if that's, if what she says is correct.
And, you know, that would, we would have to look at it and say, they'll have to research what the portions of the property that are already in, and look at their fill notes. And we can do that. We fulfilled the public hearing requirement, so we could bring the ordinance back to you at the November meeting.
Okay.
That's what I would suggest.
I would, I would then make a motion that we postpone the annexation until we review the...
Postpone, or is there distinction between postponing and tabling?
No, postpone it.
Postpone it.
Because if you table it, then we think it might have the same meeting.
I'm too genial to have that.
You tried, Brian, but I got...
You're, you're right.
So I'd like to postpone this item until the next...
The next meeting or until November?
The next regular council meeting, I would say.
Okay, that would be in two weeks.
In two weeks.
In two weeks, is that...
We have a motion to table the postpone. We have a second? We have a second?
Correct.
Question. Can, can we also have a second opinion on that? Not only have it relooked at, but also get a second opinion?
Have a surveyor?
Correct.
We can do that.
Okay.
When you say second opinion, you want another engineering firm besides the surveyor?
Another surveyor.
Another surveyor?
Surveyor.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and second to postpone. All in favor? Thank you. Next item is to approve the city council meetings of the meetings September 28, 2021. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the September 28, 2021, city council meeting minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number one, a preliminary plat for Dove Ridge addition being 11.461 acres of land, international and Great Northern Railroad Company survey, abstract number 2007, city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located on the southwest corner of Emsley Road and White Settlement Road. Ms. Betty?
It automatically changes. Did you notice that? We have both the preliminary and final plat for this proposed six-lot, single-family residential subdivision. It is 11.461 acres. The developer is Colt Cantrell, and he proposes to subdivide the property into six single-family residential lots. Three of the lots will have frontage on Emsley Road and the remaining three on White Settlement Road, which are both existing rights of way. The subdivision will be served by city water. The developer is extending off of an eight-inch water main in White Settlement Road, which will serve lots one, two, and three. And then he is also extending a six-inch water main down Emsley Road to service lots four, five, and six. And there, he is also installing two additional fire hydrants for fire protection, and that will be in accordance with ISO regulations for residential development. There is no sanitary sewer service in this area, so each of the lots will be served by private septic systems. Stormwater for these lots flows from west to east across the subdivision. It does not require on the one-acre-plus lots to have detention, but the lots will be graded to drain the water away from each of the single-family residences, and those lot grading plans will be submitted with building permits. Both the preliminary and final plat come forth with a favorable recommendation as it meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance from both staff and planning and zoning commission. We will need separate action on the preliminary and then on the final. We do have both of the plats, as well as the application, in your packets, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have in, Mr. Cantrell, also.
Was notification provided to neighbors in the area regarding this plot, the plot? Is that required?
Not for the subdivision. If he was rezoning, there would be no application letters.
Okay. Any other questions for Betty? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for the Dove Ridge addition.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, a final plat for Dove Ridge addition being 11.461 acres of land, international and Great Northern Railroad, Railroad Company survey, abstract number 2007, city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located on the southwest corner of Emsley Road and White Settlement Road. That's the same addition. Is that correct, Betty?
Yes, sir. Same property, just the final plat.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat for the Dove Ridge addition.
We have a motion?
Second.
Who spoke first?
We'll take criminal.
All right. We have a motion and second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Betty.
Thanks, Betty.
Discussion action, setting the date, time, and location of regular council meeting for the Willow Park City Council. That would be the one. Somebody give me a date.
That would be...
Well, this is for all of them?
This is for all, this is for the next fiscal year.
Yep.
I'm sorry?
This is setting the regular time and location for the next fiscal year, for the fiscal year beginning, well, today through September 30.
So we want to, this the one we're talking about?
Yeah, this one we're talking about.
I think, I feel like we should probably keep the same date.
The second and fourth Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree of keeping it Tuesdays, second and fourth Tuesdays.
And we'll work around other issues that we have come up, and if there's changes needed to be made, we can deal with those. But I'm, I'm in favor of keeping them on Tuesday nights at 7:00. If we need to change them to 6:00, we will. But what's the council's pleasure?
Is that something, like, how would we revisit that later on if, you know, we decide that, you know, moving it up an hour would be better or a different night? What's the process? I guess, once we've approved it here, we just...
On each agenda, we'll have the date and time of the next meeting, so if it's something you want them to change to 6:00, you just move to do that.
For a specific next meeting, but not for all?
Yes.
So we set it, set it for the whole year, but we can individual...
I mean, you can change it anytime.
You can.
You can. I'm just saying that will give you...
That's more of what I was checking to see if, like, if, is this the set in stone? We'll have to make a motion every time if we wanted to change it, or is that, that was just looking for some clarification on that?
Moving forward, I'm proposing to the council, if it's their pleasure, we keep it on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM, unless otherwise advised or changed. Is that good?
I wouldn't mind moving it up an hour if 6:00 o'clock would work. I would just put that out there. I have, just find that it's easier. It gives, you know, our council more time to hear, comment, and then get to business related without it being past 9:00 o'clock or later by the time we're, we're out of here.
Any other comments or questions?
I have no preference on 6:00 or 7:00, so I'm, I'm good with whatever the majority...
I think 7:00 gives people a chance to get home and settle in and then get to the meeting. As a rule, we don't have lengthy meetings.
I like Tuesday. I'll say that. I, I prefer 7:00 because it allows people to get home from work and maybe grab something to eat quickly. That's my preference.
Mr. Runnbaum?
I'm good with the date, and I'm flexible with either time, so.
Let's, let's keep it a Tuesday at 7:00, and if needs change, we can change it.
I'll make a motion that we have the normal council meetings, the second and fourth Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
We have a motion?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, we're going to table or postpone. Could we have a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion that we postpone the designating of the official newspaper of the city of Willow Park.
Do we have a second?
To the next regular meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number five, to consider and act on approving holiday schedule for 2122. Mr. Grimes?
This is the same holiday schedule as we've had in the past, I guess, three or four years. Same dates as previous years.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the holiday schedule as presented.
We have a motion, a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number six, to consider and act on all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed $7.5 million for the purpose of paving contractual, paying contractual obligations to be incurred for acquiring, constructing, improving, and maintaining streets, thoroughfares, bridges, alleyways, and sidewalks within the city, including related storm drainage improvements, traffic signalization and signage, streetscaping and median improvements, and utility relocations, and the acquisition of rights of way therefore, constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, and equipping park facilities, and the acquisition of rights of way therefore, and professional service rendered in relation to such projects and the financing thereof, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining there too. We have one public comment, and then Mr. Galli.
Hi, Marcy Galli, Squaw Creek Road, Willow Park. I wanted to speak to this. I, I was a little surprised that we were intent to issue the $7.5 million CO. I was hoping that the council would go for a vote on something like this. A CO is forced debt, just like, well, it's not as bad as a tax note. At a time when we've, we've raised our city taxes, and we've heard complaints already about the new drainage fees, I will be paying another 115 more a year in drainage fees, which I'm, I'm okay with that. But then the, the other, the other issue is the utility rates, water and sewer. A new GEN study was supposed to have been done. I, I don't think that's been discussed. So we don't know if rates are going to need to go up, I assume, because it hasn't been discussed. So I would just urge counsel, instead of forcing a CO, a certificate of obligation, to wait and issue a general obligation bond and a vote in May. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Grimes? Or is this Eric?
Well, I'll kind of lay the groundwork for it. So we were asked by council to start putting projects together, and the financing of those street projects could be a CO. It also could be a general obligation bond, and I can go into those as well. I think we had some discussion about a GEO at, at some point, but I'll be more than happy to answer that question. Before you deny it is a resolution for up to and not to exceed $7.5 million, we can come off of that number. We cannot exceed that number. The resolution also includes provisions for park system improvements that we may make at the Cross Timbers Park or some, or in some other areas as needed. The number is reflective of some of the projects we had discussed in the past. Those projects include concrete on Ranch House Road from the existing intersection of Ranch House and Crown back up to Vista, which is the, kind of the corner of our city limits there. It also includes concrete improvements on Kingsgate from I-20 up the hill, if you will, to where it gets into the residential area. That street has suffered tremendous deterioration from water getting out of the street. It also includes concrete improvements on San Bass Road, where Squaw Creek transitions into San Bass. That culvert is scheduled to be replaced. That's one of the drainage projects. And we're going to end up putting concrete similar to what we did on Meadows Place Drive and similar to what we did, I think that was the only one we actually done it on. We did, we did a different project earlier. Similar to what we did on Meadows Place Drive. Being concrete for a certain period of time, given the hill that you're going to have to go up, concrete just made a lot of sense to come up through San Bass and then extend the concrete to Ranch House Road. Once it gets into the residential area, it'd be asphalt reconstruction. This project has asphalt reconstruction on Old Ford Road from Squaw Creek back to the end of it, and it takes care of all the, the, help me out.
The name of that subdivision?
Yeah. Old, it takes care of the Old Ford Road area. How's that sound? Thank you. It also does San Bass Court, Trinity Court, and Trinity Place, which are all suffering deterioration. It also redoes Fox Hunt. It also does San Bass all the way over back to where Fox Hunt kind of joins into it. And then, I don't, can't remember what that road is between Fox Hunt and San Bass at...
Aspenwood?
Yeah, thank you. I can't even read it with my readers. That's how bad this is. So that's what you would get for this, for this...
What about Crown from Ranch House down to...
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Crown from Ranch House down to the city limit, where the crow flies, it's that entrance into the subdivision that goes into actually the city of Weatherford, and so you'd have concrete on that road as well. I think when Derek was here, we had, I think that number was close to, I think we had, like, 6.2, 6.3. That's construction and engineering cost. There will be some issuance costs as well with the CO, and then if we wanted to have any provisions at all for park improvements, we're giving you the opportunity to do that as well. Tonight, what you're doing is providing the required 45-day notice to put, to run in the paper. If, if we are, if the resolution's passed, then we'll get the add in the paper, and you can take action on December the 14th. That is the options tonight. Eric Maha with Hilltop Securities is here, talked about the debt itself and some of the questions that you guys have had during this process.
Good evening, mayor, council. As mentioned, Eric Maha with Hilltop, and you have some preliminary numbers in your packet, and also, before getting to some of the numbers, I just wanted to highlight Mr. Grimes' walkthrough, but there is Exhibit A, the actual notice itself. The four key items in the notice, as mentioned, December 14th would be the date scheduled in the notice that council would reconvene, and that's the date that certificates would be formally approved, would have interest rates and all the terms finalized between now and December 14th to bring to council that evening. You also see the not to exceed amount, seven and a half million, as Mr. Grimes described, and then little "I" and little "II" describe the projects themselves, so the projects listed in Exhibit A, the COs could be used for those. And then not to exceed amount, or not to exceed term, we set for 20 years in line with historical debt of the city. And that leads to the, the numbers, I believe you have four schedules. We looked at a 15-year repayment and a 20-year repayment for the certificates, and that decision doesn't have to be made tonight or this evening. That's something that has to get closer to the actual sale and pricing of the certificates that would, that decision would be made. So, you have those numbers for a 15 and 20-year. Also, for each amortization, we, we've assumed a level payment structure, if you will, meaning the payments will be level from year to year. And we've also included what we call a RAP structure. I know we've talked about this in the past. The city's existing debt, supported from property taxes, is scheduled to decline, almost get cut in half, I would say, in 2026 to 2027, so there's a drop in the city's existing debt service supported from property taxes. And so, the RAP structure is designed to mitigate any tax rate impact while that existing debt's being retired, and once that existing debt retires, then the payment on the seven and a half million, in this case, would resume. So, that, that would be the RAP structure, you're going to notice the lower tax impact in those earlier years with that structure. So, we've provided those alternatives just for council this evening, and again, that decision does not have to be made tonight, this is just the first step in the process. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the assumptions. We've assumed some growth in the assessed value.
4%.
Yes, sir. 4% in the assessed value. Obviously, each year, as values fluctuate, that tax rate would be adjusted if needed.
Just for the, just for clarification, does your, your assumption on the tax increase, does that include a frozen tax levy amount that we've discussed previously?
It does not. We're including the base property value, so any of the frozen, and then, you know, if the city overcollects, we're assuming a 98% collection if you overcollect, and then you have delinquents, all those, and interest earnings on your debt service fund can help offset that.
Just to recap, the way interest and sinking is calculated post SB 2 is, they do not calculate a frozen tax levy into that tax rate. So, the way the structure's set up is you'll have some amounts of overcollection or surplus every year because the state does not account for that. This year, that number is going to be roughly 150,000 to 160,000, I think actually maybe higher than that, that was not accounted for. So, you have in your rate structure already a built-in cushion, if you will, for additional debt, should you choose to use it. Conversely, to Ms. Galley's point, the overcollection can also used to be paid down the debt, existing debt as well. You will have your rate cut, your debt obligations will be cut in half, '26, starting in '20, after '26. Yeah. Twenty-seven. I would recommend a wraparound. It backloads your debt. For example, you know, you're looking at million-dollar payments beginning in 2032. Do you have our debt schedule handy? Do you have it on you?
Yes, sir, and actually, we summarize it in column D.
Okay, you already got that then, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And that, that's probably not the detail...
Yeah.
...to get you the full detail. That's more of an aggregate of all the principal and interest on the existing debt.
So, for example, in 2032, your debt service existing right now is going to be $270,000. And so, if you, if you did a wraparound, you're backloading that debt, you're trying to keep your, what you want to try to do is keep your, your debt service relatively the same from year to year, if you want to start doing some projects.
And I think the benefit on the tax rate is probably five and six cents lower tax rate through 2026 with the RAP structure. And we've talked about this in the past, anytime we sell certificates, we always embed a call feature, so in year nine or 10, the city would have the ability to refinance or pay off these COs with funds on hand. Before I forget, one other comment I failed to mention, since we're in the middle of fiscal '22, the first payment on the certificates would be scheduled for fiscal '23, so it would be that's budget, there wouldn't be a payment for this current fiscal.
For this current fiscal, yeah. Yes. It'd be the, so when we, you want to, when we set the tax rate in September of '22...
Yes, sir.
This will be part of that debt obligation.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Grimes or Eric?
All right, sure. Okay, so, and looking at that, so I think you explained the wraparound fairly well, and we have the option of a 15 or a 20, which, if, my main concern is that tax rate next year, and I do recognize we have a frozen tax levy that could potentially allow us to keep our INS at the same level, even though when I look in your column here, we'd be jumping from our 26 cents to 31. So, we're looking at, I think, as you said, five to six cents. It's possible our frozen tax levy could allow us to hold that steady. We also have the MNO rate that will drop...
It's going to drop.
...because that's what happens with an MNO rate, so that our total tax rate could drop or remain steady with a seven and a half million dollar CO, and I'd like you, do you concur that that, what I just said, is a possibility? I know you can't put it in writing all that way with a frozen tax levy, but do you concur that that's a good way to look at it?
Yes, I would agree. I think we have a few different assumptions.
Okay.
I think you've outlined those. One being assessed values next year, because the city won't get those till next July, and a lot can happen coming out of July, and so we have that, and then the frozen levy discussion, how much is that from year to year? And then also the interest rate, we've assumed above mark interest rate in analysis.
Okay.
So, we have really three factors that are unknown at this time in this model, so...
Okay.
And we try to be conservative in all three.
Right.
That's helpful.
I know 4% growth, I mean, I had asked the change to a 4% growth over the 1%, the previous ones we looked at, because it's closer to...
Yeah, we went back to 4%, and that's, the 1% we felt like was, was not genuine.
Yes.
So, the other thing I would ask is, you mentioned not to exceed. So, as we're looking at this, I think, Brian, you went through the potential ones that we discussed a couple of months ago, the projects.
Yes.
If it's not to exceed, we can all, at a future council meeting, discuss exactly which projects we think should be included and potentially back off that amount if we felt that we don't want to go out for the full debt, and that doesn't change the notice or what we're doing now, is that correct?
Correct. You can always downsize, and now we'd want to have that final number, the city would have to direct us, I would say about a week before that December 14 date.
Okay.
We want to have a good, you know, we need 7 million in the construction fund, we need seven and a half, we need six, you know?
Right.
But this gives you up to seven and a half.
Okay.
You would need to know about a week, the first week in December at the latest.
What are, what do you think the issuance costs are?
First, seven and a half, we're estimating around 100,000, slightly less.
100,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a lot less than...
And there, and depending on how we sell the debt, likely in the public market, you all have a good bond ready, you'd have underwriting fees on top of that, but that, that would be built into the interest rate.
Okay. So, when we're, when we're having this discussion, it could be X amount for streets, X amount for park improvements, and then I can pencil in 100, 125,000 for issuance?
Yes.
For issuance costs, bond counsel, FA...
You have bond rating, attorney general, paying agents.
Yeah.
And what we can do, when you all have a, if there's a closer number, we can provide an exact issuance cost estimate for each of them. And one other thought, and state law allows, the seven and a half is the par amount or the principal amount of the certificates, to the extent the bonds is a certificate sold at a premium, we can use premium dollars to offset those issuance costs. So, in fact, you could, in essence, get a full seven and a half million to the construction fund, the bond premium would pay for the cost of issuance in that case.
Okay.
So, that's another thought as well.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Eric or Mr. Grimes?
Eric, do you have, with respect to a GO? And Pat, this is, if, if we wanted to do a GO, we couldn't get on November ballot and pass that deadline, so the earliest you would be is May of '22. So, we would need to have, we would need to have a, can you work that calendar back off the top of your head?
No, nothing.
I, Texas cities have a window, and that window, I don't have the exact dates, but it's early February to February 14th.
Yeah.
Don't hold me to that, but first two weeks in February is the window you would have to make that decision to get on the ballot.
Okay. If not, then you're looking at November of '22, because it's on a unified election day. Is there any, any cost difference between a GO and a CO as far as issuance costs go?
No, not issuance cost, both. For GO, you'd have the cost of holding election, which is fairly minimal.
Okay.
Really be the only difference.
Okay.
From an investor standpoint, and interest rate, that's often a question we get, both would carry the city's tax pledge, so it'd be the same interest rate either way.
Okay. The, the only variable is, is time and what interest rates will look like six months or a year from now, is that correct?
With the May election, typically, you'd wait till you get property values in July to sell that debt, and so you're looking, if it's a GO bond election, you're looking at issuing the debt next August.
Okay.
Receiving funds next September.
Okay.
So, with the CO, based on this calendar, December 14 sale, the funds would be delivered to the city mid-January.
Okay.
For a CO.
Pat, if a GO goes on the ballot and it fails, is it, if it, if it was just this broad of language and not specific to, I'm going to ask you a two-part question. If it's this broad of a language, state statute says we can't bring it back up on a CO for three years? Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah, three years.
If we mention specific projects in the GO, for example, Kings Gate and Old Ford Road and whatnot, and that fails, could we bring up an additional street project that would do Squaw Creek?
Yeah, if it's a different bond issue.
Kind of touch out, if it's a GO, then the way the projects are listed, you'd have a street proposition, and you'd have to have separate propositions.
So, each, so, so Kings Gate would be Prop A, Old Ford would be Prop, yeah, it'd be, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Language in there? I'll make a motion for the approval and authorization of the publication of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in the amount of 7.5 million.
Not to exceed 7.5?
Not to exceed 7.5 million.
We have a motion.
For the point of discussion, I'll make a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
My question is the interest in a GO, is that, we've discussed it in the past, and I do think that a CO is a potential way to get roads done faster. We've had issues with and complaints that roads haven't been addressed, so this is a way to get it started, but I've always been open to the discussion of a GO, so...
If the interest, if the interest rates are the same?
If interest rates suddenly start jumping, we will not be able to do what we just talked about.
And we all know, we all know what the cost of waiting this, any action has cost us.
We've got a clear path forward with this wraparound to be able to afford this project with the debt drop-off in '26, '27, so I think it would be not the wisest thing to continue to wait when we have such deteriorating roads and we got an opportunity to fix it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? We got two. We got three. Thank you.
Can I vote for?
We have four. We have a vote.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Vote for it.
Thank you. Executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council may convene into closed executive session in accordance with the following authority. Sections 55107-1, consultation with attorney, 55107-2, real property, 55107-3, prospective gifts, 55107-4, personnel matters, 55107-6, security matters, 55108-7, economic development. Executive session may be held under these six sections at the end of the regular session, workshop, and/or special session, or at any time during the meeting that a need arises for the city council to seek advice from the city attorney as to the posted subject matter of this city council meeting. Without limiting, the foregoing city council may convene into closed executive session on the following. 55108-7, economic development negotiations, 55107-1, consultation with attorney, Chapter 380, incentives. Could we clear the council, please? Executive session's at 8:04 PM.